Legislative Session. Good evening, everyone, and welcome to Harrisburg City Council Legislative Session. Today is Tuesday, October the 13th, 2020, and I'm now co- on this meeting toward at 6:00 PM. Mr. Petrowski, please do the roll call.
Mr. Allott.
Present.
Ms. Bowers.
Present.
Ms. Daniels.
Present.
Ms. Green.
Present.
Mr. Madsen.
Here.
Mr. Majors.
Here.
Ms. Williams.
Here.
Okay, moving on to the invocation, Mr. Madsen.
Yes, thank you, President Williams. Just want to acknowledge a few passings in the community of the past week. First, we had the passing of Anthony Williams, who was tragically struck down in a hit-and-run accident. Thoughts and prayers with him and his family. And let's hope that the perpetrators of this hit-and-run are brought to justice. We also had a staffer who lost their mother and... Bear with me one moment, I've lost the gentleman's name and his mother, I'm embarrassed.
Mr. Don Lyons.
Don Lyons passed away, his mother passed away, so we'd like to send our thoughts and prayers to him if we could all observe the moment of silence, thank you. Appreciate it, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Madsen, moving on, Mr. Allott, who would do the pledge allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Allott. Now moving on to communications, we have none this evening, council members, we move on to courtesy of the floor. Mr. Petrowski, do we have some constituents who would like to speak at this time to city council?
Unfortunately, they're not going to speak, I'm going to read, I don't know if we can maybe adjust that, but I do have some public comments.
Comments, then, I'm sorry, public comments.
Okay. We have a couple of public comments submitted by Winnie Okella, she writes, regarding the Harrisburg Community Review Board, "It is my strong desire that the final draft of this bill incorporate the feedback gathered through the town halls and public comments submitted to city council more of our strongest support, the version of Bill 8 amended by the HCRB worker that proposed a review board structure encouraging accountability and oversight, unobstructed access to information, independent investigative and subpoena powers," thank you. Christopher Eby submitted the same comment that was just read. Sean Limerick at the 623 Radner Street, now for this email, this is... Comes with pictures opposing the vacation of Aggett Street across, for a number of reasons. One, the paper streets were to remain in place until they were vacated, however, the fence was erected 2019. Actually, scratch those from the record, I'm reading, I just read three comments from the last meeting, and now the other ones just kicked in, I apologize, this is the first comment submitted for this evening, this is by Giovanna Sarver. Dear City Council, I'm concerned about landlords attempting to evict residents during the pandemic, there is currently a national moratorium on evictions, yet the courts are being flooded with hundreds of eviction cases, how will you help protect vulnerable residents during this unprecedented times, being forced to live out of your home right now is unsafe, cruel, and hundreds of people could be displaced, what will city council do right now when the national moratorium ends 1231 to help protect residents, please consider prohibiting all eviction proceedings? Lorial Collins says, "I have reviewed Bill 8, there are key points that concern myself as well as others in the community for our conversation on the topic. The mission of Bill 8 is to serve the community of Harrisburg, not the police bureau. There have been several concerns from the community that have not been addressed sufficiently. We want that Harrisburg Community Review Board, not a citizens' law enforcement advisory committee, language matters. We demand an accountability structure which historically has been more power than an advisory committee, I understand improving the relationship with police bureau, but what about the residents of this city? In order to build better relationships with the community and the bureau, we need to see accountability for wrong for actions from the police, good relationships are built on trust. We as a community need to at least know that if we are treated improperly, there will be repercussions immediately, Bill 8 needs a committee and community amendment." Brand Basem writes, "Dear members of council, the community has reviewed the proposed changes on Bill 8 and would like to say that Bill 8's language matters." This is the same comment that was just submitted previously, which I just read. Ray Y. from Calder and Green Street writes, "The community has reviewed the proposed changes to Bill 8, and we would like to say your efforts are biased throughout this bill. Favor of law enforcement is entirely unacceptable, we all remember what went on during the early days of Black Lives Matter protests this spring when the city went into lockdown, and the state bird became the helicopter, we remember the department's disgrace in the fall of white supremacists and anti-lockdown protesters who drove aggressively through residential areas, harassed people and spewed racist comments throughout midtown while brandishing weapons, and your department did nothing. Stop propping up the problem. The naming convention of this body is not being addressed, we would like a review board and not an advisory council, you want to live here, not just commute and burnout to the suburbs, start by listening to the people who live here telling you what is wrong. The primary function of this body must not be to serve the police bureau, but to serve the people of Harrisburg, we have submitted several concerns throughout our community draft, still have not been addressed. Transparency and clarity of complaints against officers tracking a behavior and unbecoming of an officer of removal barriers to make these reports must be addressed. The self-serving, self-protecting AG's office, which can decline to prosecute officers or intentionally underrepresent criminal charges in a grand jury, must also fall under community review. Thank you for your service and your prompt attention." Jane Block also submitted the same comment, which is expressing this support for Bill 8 that helps the people of Harrisburg and the language matters in the bill, and strongly suggests that the focus on the membership requirements of this review board placing members on it who are concerned about holding police accountable to our community rather than just concerns about relationship accountability is absolutely essential, please consider the community first in your further drafts of Bill 8. Rachel Lee Faith Peacock of 1700 Block of Fulton is writing again because of the reckless wording of Bill 8 language, "The naming of the convention of this body has not been addressed, we would like a review board and not an advisory council. We have been saying this stuff for weeks, the primary function of this body must not be to serve the police bureau, but to serve the people of Harrisburg. We look to people of the city and been asking nicely several times, what can we do to have our voices heard? Or three, we have submitted several concerns through our community draft that still have not been addressed, if I were to ignore my boss, they would fire me, if I didn't, I was qualified to do a job, I would step down, this council is unable to listen and do as the republic asks, perhaps they should evaluate their life choices. Membership qualifications are not malarkey because even the mayor doesn't even have to live in the city for more than neighborhoods while killing over policing in my community, the current Bill 8 is flaming hot garbage. I'm tired of reading this trash bill every week, and I'm tired of writing every week, I work 40 hours a week, and I'm part of organizations, I don't have time to keep writing. If you write a bill that protects black and brown people of the city, please address the concerns immediately as they focus on this potential of the body should not be meeting the needs of the Harrisburg Police Bureau on holding the bureau accountable to meeting the needs of Harrisburg residents." Jamie Earl writes, "Are there any plans in place in the case of members of the Proud Boys or other armed groups that show up in Harrisburg to intimidate police who are trying to vote?" Patricia Stringer said last Friday, October 9, 2020, she put out her trash for Friday pickup on Thursday evening in McLeaster Street in the back alley, the next morning she checked the trash container, and her one bag was still there, it was not a holiday week, and she looked in her neighbor's bin and trash had been picked up. She sent an email to the director of Public Works and received no explanation she had requested on numerous occasions that two blue and white street signs to be placed on 21st and Kensington, 22nd and Kensington Streets, none exist. She had a missed-delivered package by UPS and Federal Express, home repair personnel not finding the correct street because of this, look on Berry Hill Street, as well as food delivery for people searching for the correct address. The most unusual was when she was sitting on her porch and the Harrisburg police thought they were at the 2100 block of Swinair Street, but they were actually on Kensington. Lastly, Cat, Cher, Rod have missed the street signs due to no signs and had to back up, during the pandemic period, it is essential that medical personnel, firemen, and safety know where trouble is located. There was a PPL power outage affecting 843 homes, of which the Melrose Garden was included. We have cancer, diabetes, heart, and other related health issues, and neighbors who live on the street require electricity for their equipment, medical personnel must know where to come if needed, also heavy snowstorms, our street must be identified plowed, most important that the US Census find all residents so they can be counted. Please have the appropriate city officials handle these items, thank you. Ellen Schenk submits the same comment, which was submitted regarding the Community Review Board, which has proposed the changes to Bill 8, "We would like to say that the language matters, the naming of the convention has not been addressed, we would like the review board not an advisory board, the primary function must not be to serve the police bureau, but to serve the people of Harrisburg. We submitted several comments and concerns of our own, the draft has not been addressed, we want a two-year resident requirement, be sensitive to the community needs and perception, and hold law enforcement accountable, please address these concerns immediately and focus. The potential body should not be on meeting in the needs of Harrisburg Bureau, but the accountability to meeting in the needs of the Harrisburg residents, thank you for your service." Amanda Arbor submitted a comment, she lives on Allison Hill, and she's writing to "Comment on the amended version of Bill 8, there has been extensive community feedback on this bill and the language matters, it should be clear that the residents of Harrisburg want is a community review board, not a citizens' advisory committee. That should not be named as such, a body designated increased accountability, transparency, and access to information for the community not to improve community relations, a body empowered to investigate complete complaints of police misconduct, excessive force, abuse of power, bias, and systemic racism to hold police accountable. Any entity created under this legislation must not serve as a publicity stunt for the Bureau of Police with no real power, but it must serve the people of Harrisburg with real mechanisms independently, hold the police accountable. The young professionals of color and others in our community have put in significant time and effort to draft a version of the bill that would do just that, but despite the draft being provided to council, we do not see some of the critical pieces reflected in the amended legislation, thus I am any other members of our community have significant concerns with current draft legislation and ask that you address these concerns immediately, anything less would be blatantly ignoring the clearly expressed desires of your constituents." Kamika Campbell writes, she submitted two attachments which I will forward. She said there are several issues with Bill 8 and the language that arise from keeping the language in the bill, as is city council still seems to be struggling with the idea that this entity's sole focus on the purpose should be to serve the community, our requests from the beginning haven't been to improve relationships and promotes public safety as we HPP cheerleaders. Rather, our requests have always been to improve public safety by establishing civilian oversight that the HBP serves all people transparently and fairly. Additionally, the naming convention of this body has not been addressed, we would like the review board and not an advisory council, the primary function of the body must not be to serve the police bureau, but to serve the people of Harrisburg. We submitted several concerns throughout our own community, and the draft has still not been addressed. Number one, the residency requirements. The residency requirements should not be more stringent, and definitely not by a factor of three times, for this body than is for more officers, offices of the mayor and city seats, even as a requirement to be a Harrisburg police officer, two. Please decrease the number of mayoral appointments, the mayor doesn't need to be given this much power over this body, he is already over the police and refuses to hold them accountable on small issues as it stands. He does not need to appoint almost half the members of the standing committee. He's not using the power that he has now to serve the people, what makes us think that he would do so with these appointments, number three, this version of the bill in Section 2-515.5 removes the police chief as an ex-officio member, thank you, but seems to remove the requirement that HCRB members cannot be municipal or city employees. Please clarify why this was removed if this is supposed to be a community body. Why is this a timeline for adding this provision back to the legislation? This needs to be added back as soon as possible. Please address these concerns along with the others attached in the graphic immediately as they focus on the potential body should not be on a meeting the needs of the Harrisburg Police Bureau, but on holding the bureau accountable and meeting the needs of Harrisburg residents, thank you. Liam Hicklin submitted the following. Dear members of council, I was disappointed and discouraged when I read the final draft resolution of Bill 8. I feel like the time and investment and energy that we, the residents of Harrisburg, put into the letting city council know are justifiable problems within the bill is written, were ignored, these problems have not been fixed, and they need to be, one, the name of the board creates an expectation of it as if it's a role, we made it clear we would like the board to be named Harrisburg Community Review Board rather than an advisory committee, the language of the prevable flex ideological foundation of the bill, we made it clear that the language should center the community rather than the police, and that the purpose should focus on transparency and investigations of police misconduct and on holding police accountability for transgressions against the community. As it stands, the language still centers police and focuses on proving residents' perception of police. Number three, the makeup of the board should reflect the makeup of the community, and the criteria should not be so narrow than any residence who has the time, passion and commitment to serve on the board would be excluded. You have suggested candidates must have lived in the city of Harrisburg for a minimum of three years, yet candidates for city council positions and the mayor only have to live in Harrisburg for one year. I implore you to look at the feedback you have gotten over this bill over the last few months and take them to heart before voting on it, thank you. And that is all for the comments for tonight.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Petrowski. Moving on, council members. Proof of minutes. Proof of legislative session minutes of September the 22nd, 2020. Is there any omissions, violations, or corrections? Hearing none, minutes were standing as approved. We now move on to reports of committees. Report from Chair Bowers on the public hearing of October the 6th, 2020, Ms. Bowers, are you ready with your report?
Yes, thank you, President Williams, good evening. On Tuesday, October 6th, 2020, the Building and Housing Committee hosted a public hearing to discuss Bill 12 of 2020. Bill 12 of 2020 is an ordinance amending zoning regulations related to the establishment and operation of bed and breakfast uses, including chapters 7-305.7B, and 7-333.2A subsection 24 of the zoning code of the city of Harrisburg. Jeffrey Knight, Director of the Planning Bureau, offered testimony on behalf of the administration. Michael Wilson, owner of the manor-on-front bed and breakfast, provided an overview of the proposed amendment. The zoning code amendment made two major changes to the city of Harrisburg's zoning code. First, it expands the definition of the bed and breakfast by providing either an owner-occupied or manager-occupied bed and breakfast, and it adds two non-resident management employees. Similar zoning ordinances have been implemented successfully in Lancaster and State College. Council members requested copies of both the Lancaster and State College ordinances for review prior to taking any further action on Bill 12 of 2020. And just for the record, we did receive copies of both of those ordinances earlier today. This concludes my report, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Bowers. Moving on to report from Chair Green on the work session of October 6th, 2020. Ms. Green, are you ready with your report?
Yes, I am, President Williams.
Thank you.
Good evening, everyone, during the work session of October 6th, 2020, in the Public Safety Committee, we discussed Bill 8 again. During this time, we had a brief discussion about some of the amendments that had already been proposed. There was discussion about if we should vote during the work session for that amendment, for those amendments, or if we should wait to the legislative session, we decided to wait until legislative session to follow our current protocols. There was also one other amendment that hadn't been previously discussed, it was discussed, and that would be a compliance trigger that if the information wasn't provided to the commission in a timely manner, that the commission could recommend that the hiring funds for police moving forward would be frozen until they comply with the information being provided. Tonight, we will be voting only on the amendments for Bill 8 to officially amend the bill, and then at that point, we would send it back to committee for the work session on October 20th, where we'll continue the discussion, see how the bill has come together with the current amendments, see if there are other amendments we feel are necessary, and then it will be up for a potential vote on October 27th, depending on how that discussion on October 20th goes. And that concludes my report for this evening.
Thank you, Ms. Green. Now moving on to report from Chair Madsen on the public hearing of October the 6th, 2020, Mr. Madsen, are you ready with your report?
I am, President Williams.
Thank you.
On October 6th, Harrisburg City Council had a public hearing to discuss Bill 11 and ordinance amending the official zoning map of the city of Harrisburg for 2,200 and 2,300 Market Street Zone institutional INS to change the zoning designation to commercial neighborhood CN. And council received an overview of the project, or excuse me, the amendment by Planning Director Knight. The applicant was present to ask question, the applicant clarified that the purpose of their request is to adapt the property for a village concept, and just for clarification purposes, this is at the old Bishop McDevitt Building, and this is a project proposed by the Bridge Group. The development will feature coworking, community, and onsite event space. The eventual project will provide fresh produce and educational workshops and mixed-use housing. Changing it from the residential low density and a residential medium density to a commercial neighborhood will allow the applicant to pursue these various uses for their project, so it's just a clarification piece to help them forward with their project. And would encourage all my colleagues to vote in affirmation, they were largely in favor when we discussed the bill at our hearing. That's it for me.
Thank you, Mr. Madsen. Moving on to report from Chair Majors on the public hearing of October 6th, 2020, Mr. Majors, are you ready to report?
Yes, I am.
Thank you.
At a public meeting on October, a public hearing on October 6th, the Public Works Committee met to consider... I have the bill number, my apologies. Too many windows open. Sorry, meant to consider Bill 10 of 2020, an ordinance vacating and striking from the official map of the city of Harrisburg, various unnamed paper streets within the block bounded by Radner, Jefferson Street, Columbia Street, and North 6th Street, and a gate street between Columbia Street and Radner Street pursuant to Chapter 3-109 of the codified ordinances of the city of Harrisburg. We received an overview of the of the ordinance by Director Knight. And additionally, the petitioners from Teamsters Local Union 776 were there to answer questions from members of the committee. Upon our, after our questioning, we also did receive a public complaint from a resident who resides at 623 Radner Street, on the 600 blocks, excuse me, of Radner Street, Mr. Limerick, who expresses opposition to this change as it would limit his access to that, to the street, will cut off his access completely to the street behind his home. Following the meeting, President Williams and I attempted to touch base with Mr. Limerick to figure out his concerns. We were unable to, and we're looking to meet with him here shortly, so I am going to request at this time that we hold off on a vote on this this bill until we're able to work to attempt to address the concerns of the neighbor who has expressed his concerns to this this street vacation, and with that, that concludes my report.
Thank you, Mr. Majors. We now move on to ordinance of first reading, we have none this evening. We move on to ordinance for amendment, Bill 8 of 2020. Mr. Petrowski, please read that back into record.
Now, Bill 8 of 2020 is an ordinance amending Part 5 of the Administrative Code under Chapter 2-500, adding there to Chapter 2-515 to establish a citizens' law enforcement advisory committee.
Mr. Grover, would you like to incorporate the amendments into this bill today? Ms. Green, are you going to do the amendments?
I can do the amendments.
Okay.
So, the first proposed amendment, make a change, so I figure we would do it one amendment at a time and vote on them individually, do I need to introduce the amendments?
Yes, you do.
They have to be read into the record.
Read them into, yes, that's why I asked you if you would like to read them into record.
All right, so the first amendment would amend the general legislative intent and purpose, and it would read general legislative intent. The legislative intent of this chapter is to provide for public accountability for the exercise of police powers in the course of Harrisburg law enforcement activities. The regular objective review of information regarding law enforcement activities in the city is hereby found to promote public accountability and allow for public confidence in government. And the written version of this has all been emailed out to all council members as well.
Yes. Council members, any questions?
Okay, I just want to be clear. Okay, I just, I just want to be clear. So that's Section two dash five one five point three, correct?
Yes, that is correct.
Thank you.
Any additional questions or comments? Mr. Petrowski, please call the vote for the amendment.
Mr. Allen?
Yes.
Ms. Bowers?
Yes.
Ms. Daniels?
Yes.
Ms. Green?
Yes.
Mr. Matson?
Yes.
Mr. Majors?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Amendment one passes.
Moving on, Ms. Green.
Thank you, President Williams. The Second Amendment would be to Section two dash five one five point four, specific intent and purpose. There be the word specific added, and it will read, it is the specific intent and purpose of this chapter to establish a citizen advisory committee to improve community relationships with law enforcement throughout the city and promote public safety, which shall be known as the Citizen Law Enforcement Advisory Committee.
Any questions or comments, council members?
So I hate to kind of belabor this, this ongoing discussion. So Neil, this is kind of a question for you. We've heard time and time again about the name, the name choice with the community versus community I'm sorry, Community Review Board versus what we have here, Assistance Law Enforcement Advisory Committee. I just want to have some type of legal analysis as to why it has to be one over the other and what the difference is, at least from a legal perspective, coming from the city's perspective, prior to us voting on this particular amendment since it includes the name.
I can't, I'm happy to do that, and I will say that the name as it stands is not essential to be the name. It could have other names. But there are differences in the types of boards. And it's actually, you got to start from a bigger picture to answer the question from a legal perspective. City councils in Pennsylvania and third-class cities are bodies that have enumerated powers from the state. The state gave you powers and spelled them out. So, for example, when you created the Harrisburg Authority, which is now CRW, it was because there's a state statute that lets you create authorities, the municipal authorities act. When you create a parking authority, it's because there's a separate statute that says you can create a parking authority. The same is for the Harrisburg Redevelopment Authority. The same is for the EA, the Environmental Advisory Board is specifically authorized under the state statute creating DEP. In the optional third-class city charter law under which this body operates as a as a mayor, council, plan a city, the authorization is for the city council to create advisory boards. So you have created others, which are the EAC, the Harrisburg Planning Commission, which also comes out of the municipal planning code. But that, so this not being enumerated anywhere, there is no place to go to a state statute to say this is an express authorization. So the only express authorization we could find was advisory boards. It doesn't have to be called an advisory board. I think calling it something else and claiming it's more than an advisory board is unfair to the members that get appointed. I think it misleads, but it doesn't have to be this name. But a review board, for example, in Pittsburgh, came about because they had a home rule charter, public referendum. That's how they got it there. The Police Advisory Board in York was put into the city charter in the nineteen sixties and then eventually disbanded. It's, so the options to create a true review board are A, a public referendum for home rule that includes it, or state legislation to give you that enumerated power that you do not currently have.
Gotcha. So, I mean, quite honestly, the language that we have chosen has been synonymous with how we have created kind of advisory boards and commissions that function within the city to date.
Right, because they're actually exercising the council's authority to advise the council, not the police, on what to do. Just, that's what the Audit Committee does. That's what the Planning Commission does. That's why the things come back to you from Planning Commission, because they're advising council. They're helping you exercise your authority under state law.
Thank you. That is actually helpful, because I feel like we've danced around this a lot over the last few weeks and months, and I really have not felt like I've gotten a clear understanding as to, as to why. But thank you for that information. I appreciate. That's the only question I had on this. Thank you.
Any additional questions or comments, council members? Hearing none, please call the vote, Mr. Petrowski.
Mr. Allen?
Yes.
Ms. Bowers?
Yes.
Ms. Daniels?
Yes.
Ms. Green?
Yes.
Mr. Matson?
Yes.
Mr. Majors?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
That motion carries. Just, I just want to make sure after each amendment that we're getting someone to second each one. So for the First Amendment, I didn't catch you seconded the first, and so if we could have a second for each of the first two amendments, that'd be great. Does anyone want to?
Go ahead, put me down for a second, and I realize that too. Actually, when you just make a motion, and then it can get seconded as you read the language, but go ahead and have me second the first two.
Thank you.
Thank you. The third proposed amendment, I'd like to make a motion to amend Bill eight, Section two dash five one five point six, composition, to read, the CLIAK shall be comprised of nine voting members. And then also under Section C, there will be stricken part, well, I'll do that one in a second. So it'll say the CLIAK should be comprised of nine voting members.
I'll go ahead and second that.
Can we have a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, thank you. Questions or comments?
I don't really have any questions, but I will comment that this would be removing the Chair of City Councils, the Public Safety Chair of City Council, and the Commissioner or Chief of Police as non-voting members, and therefore adding two voting members to make it nine members instead of seven members.
Thank you, Ms. Green.
Chair Green, if I may. And I, so there, there was an error on my part in the, in the correction, which I just noted from the public comment. Section C would still have to be stricken into the first part of the sentence, but there was no intent to strike the provisionist, as no member shall be a public official municipal employee. So that would be, that would, do you want to do that as part of this amendment, or do you want to do that separately?
I want to do that as a separate amendment.
Okay, very good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, council members, are there any additional questions or comments? Hearing none, please call the vote, Mr. Petrowski.
Mr. Allen?
Yes.
Ms. Bowers?
Yes.
Ms. Daniels?
Yes.
Ms. Green?
Yes.
Mr. Matson?
Yes.
Mr. Majors?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
The motion carries, and then just for record-keeping purposes, you can just, I guess, call this one three A.
Okay. So I would like to make a motion for Amendment three A, which would amend Section two dash five one five point six point B, remove the portion that says, with the exception of X official members, but to leave the portion that says no member shall be a public official or municipal employee.
Just point of clarification, that should be Amendment three B instead of three A's.
Right.
Was it one's Amendment three, so it'll be?
No, one's Amendment.
Three A or three B. I mean, I'm just calling it the amendment. Amendment three is still the composition with the A. I was just calling it three A just for, I mean, it doesn't matter, but you want to call it three A or three B.
Well, this one has to be three B.
It has to be three, yeah, it has to be three B.
Okay.
All right. Hey, any questions or comments?
Oh, we need a second. I'll second.
I'm sorry, who's the second?
I'll second it. That's fine.
Okay. Any questions or comments, council members?
Yeah, just a quick. I guess, to this, I appreciate the change in the amendment from what was drafted. Just a quick question or point of clarification. Are we going to run through all of these sections separately? Because if I have an additional amendment to this section, is it the proper time to offer that now, or should I wait till Chair Green finishes her, offering her amendments?
You can go ahead, you can go ahead and offer it now. That way we're keeping the sense.
I'll wait for the vote, okay.
Now, is there something with three B, Mr. Majors, that you would like to amend?
It's not respective to three B, it's respective to the section, which is two dash one point five point six, which will be composition.
Okay, thank you. Okay, any additional questions on two point, two dash five one five point six, three B?
Could, can I get a clarification, if I may, Madam President? I thought I heard Chair, Chairwoman Green, you say this is subsection B of five one five six. This is actually subsection C. There's still a B in there.
Okay, yes, so it'll be C.
Yes.
Okay, any additional questions or comments? Hearing none, please call the vote.
Mr. Allen?
Yes.
Ms. Bowers?
Yes.
Ms. Daniels?
Yes.
Ms. Green?
Yes.
Mr. Matson?
Yes.
Mr. Majors?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
The motion carries.
Ms. Green?
I believe Mr. Majors had an amendment that he wanted to offer in this section.
Okay, Mr. Majors?
Yes, so, thank you. Looking, I shared, I shared this earlier, and I'll send it around again. But this would be an amendment to Section two dash one point five point six composition. It would add a Section D. And the clarification would be, you know, I made this prior to this amendment being changed with include the inclusion of no member shall be a public official or municipal employee. And and this would go a little bit further in my mind. So the section would read that no member of the board shall, can be an immediate relative of any Harrisburg public official. So that would be, you know, a first relative of anyone. So it's an attempt for me, from, that explanation would be to ensure that no public official has any of their, you know, a spouse, a sibling, or a parent serve on this board. We want to try to keep it as independent and transparent as possible. So that would be the amendment that I would like to offer, and that would be Section D to that piece.
So read that again, please, in the record, so we can have correct reference.
So it would be Section D, and it will say, no member of, excuse me, no member of the committee.
Right.
Sorry, shall hold, so I mean, no member of the committee can be an immediate relative of any city of Harrisburg public official.
Can we just be specific when the designation, and you mentioned spouse, parent.
Spouse, parent.
Child, right, child, right. Spouse, parent, sibling, child. So it's trying to knock out that immediate
that immediate relation from any member on that holds public office in the city of Harrisburg.
I'll second that.
Thank you. Questions or comments on five point five six D?
Just one comment. Is it just current elected officials or public officials, or is it former as well?
So my goal, my goal was just to be, it would be the current, right? So anyone who is currently serving on, as a public official in the city of Harrisburg cannot have an immediate relative serve on that board. You know, since we're just amended it tonight, and if we want to look at, you know, former or look at some other language, I just pulled this from some language I had been reviewing from other review boards across the Commonwealth.
Why don't we say former, too? It may cause conflict of interest somewhere along the line.
I, so, I mean, if we're talking questions, I think it'd be harder to say former, because.
Why? Because?
Well, because how far back do we want to go, right? You know, like, I think it's, I think current makes more sense, a current acting serving as opposed to former. For instance, if we're establishing it now, you know, we'll use the example, if one of us is not, you know, coming on to, you know, City Council again, at that point, I think if we're making nomination up until that point we hold office, we couldn't do it. But after, maybe it's a period of year, maybe within a year, maybe that's what you could do. If they, if they've served office within the last year. I'm sorry, hit the mute. So maybe put a timeframe on that if you want to do former.
Well, yeah, that's where I would really like to do that, maybe within the last year, because we, there isn't the council, I mean, I'm sorry. In the city of Harrisburg, we have that no council member of present or current can be and apply for any positions in the city of Harrisburg after leaving the elected position within a year. Any additional questions or comments?
I would be okay with when you're, I don't know, council members, if you want to propose as part of that or not. That's up to you.
Okay.
My only question is, I would have a preference for when you rewarded, that you reward the relationships, because immediate relative is a term of order, and different statutes include different people. So I don't know what the, what the municipal code sees immediate relative as.
Okay, so I will, I will attempt to, if it's, if it's okay, I will attempt to to amend my amendment. So I'll start over, okay? So this would be an amendment to Section two dash five one five point six. It'd be a Part D, and it would read that no member of the committee can be a spouse, child, excuse me, a spouse, a child, parent, or sibling. I guess, just to make sure we're covering everything, I'd include, you know, domestic partner of of any city of Harrisburg public official. Period. Sorry, that would be the end of it. I think that's.
All right. Okay, so we just. Well, you didn't include former. I mean, I mean, in current.
Yeah, I, I, for, so for.
Okay, okay.
Personally, I think that's where I would like to go if we're gonna, since we're gonna give an opportunity to maybe amend it again. Should we, you know, look at other amendments? I think that's the amendment I would like to offer.
Okay, that's fine.
I'll second that.
Thank you. Additional questions or comments? Hearing none, please call the vote.
What are we calling this amendment?
This would be, I believe, would be C.
Three C? Okay. Mr. Allen?
Yeah.
Ms. Bowers?
Yes.
Ms. Daniels?
Yes.
Ms. Green?
Yes.
Mr. Matson?
Yes.
Mr. Majors?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
The motion carries.
Mr. Grover, my understanding is that we already have a three C, so wouldn't that not be three B? You said three C.
No, that was just, that was just the name of the amendment.
Right, that was the name of the amendment. This amendment.
Okay, fine, thank you.
Yep.
Okay, thank you. Okay, Ms. Green?
All right, the next amendment would be Amendment number four. And I would make a motion to amend Bill eight to read in Section two dash five one five point seven, original committee appointments. Each of those seven original members shall reside in a different policing district within the city from other members. Would just, um, change the to those. That's what this amendment does.
All right. Any questions or comments? I mean, I'm sorry, I need a second.
Second, I'll second.
Any additional question or comments on that amendment? Please call the vote, Mr. Petrowski.
Mr. Allen?
Yes.
Ms. Bowers?
Yes.
Ms. Daniels?
Yes.
Ms. Green?
Yes.
Mr. Matson?
Yes.
Mr. Majors?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Ms. Green?
The next motion is the motion to amend Bill eight, Section two dash five one five point seven, to add Section E, and it would read, in addition, the remaining two original members shall be residents of the city who will serve as at-large appointments, each to be nominated by a majority vote of the committee at its inaugural meeting and promptly forwarded to City Council for confirmation.
Second on that amendment.
Second.
Any additional questions or comments?
I do, um, so question back to Neil.
You're muted.
Sorry. I hit the space button, then I lifted it up. Technology. Anyway, um, do any of the boards and commissions that we have currently in place allow for a function where they can appoint themselves?
Um, no.
Okay, so I, I'm just gonna put down a record that I'm concerned with this particular amendment, um, mostly because I feel like we are the duly elected officials, um, in the city. And every board and commission has an appointment process that involved us at some point. I understand there's, you know, always a debate between the mayor and council. Um, but I, I would say I'm personally not in favor of establishing something that would allow a commission or advisory board that has been, um, basically devised by council to have a self-appointment power as part of that. Um, so that's just a concern that I have, which I realize is a very unpopular opinion based on the public comment we've received. Um, but my reason for that, I think, goes a little bit deeper. You know, we're all sworn to uphold the Constitution in both Pennsylvania and the United States, and we take that very seriously. So when we create these, create these boards and commissions, you know, we're doing, we're exercising our authority under the Constitution. And I just feel like I'm not comfortable with a advisory board or commission having, um, a self-appointment process as part of that. So that's just me, I recognize that, but I just wanted to kind of put that out there.
Any additional questions or comments?
So just, just a comment, just so, so from reading this, uh, the individuals, as I read it, would still have to come before city council to be confirmed. So the way that it reads is upon the establishment of the board, they get to internally select two candidates that they would like to serve in at an app, from a, on an at-large basis, uh, so that, so after every policing district has someone, um, serving on the board, there would be two additional folks chosen by a majority of the individuals that serve on the board. So that would be four folks that were, um, provided up, well, provided by council, three by the mayor, and then the two would be from at-large upon the committee selection. And then those, those individuals will still be subject to, I guess, an advise, a consent, or confirmation, by council. So we would still have an opportunity to weigh in on the selection of those individuals as I read it. Um, I just want to make sure that I am reading this accurately, um, per, uh, Chair Green's, um, intent.
Yes, that's correct.
Uh, Mr. Majors, you, you have put into, uh, under the composition that no, no member of the committee can be an immediate relative. So how do we determine if those committee members that are selected from each of those districts may not hire or select a relative or sibling or spouse?
Right, of a public official, right. So should they, should they select someone, that person would still have to be come before city council for confirmation? I think.
I don't feel comfortable giving a committee who represents the city council, because that's what it is, is committee, who is acting on behalf of city council. And they have no authority unless city council gives them that authority to select individuals after they've been selected by the city council body. I just, I, I, I think I just have a problem with that, having that responsibility. I think that should lie with city council, since they represent us and they are acting on our behalf.
Right, and, um, I would, I would, uh, not, but I would say to that point, that it will be similar to, um, a discussion we had, uh, I guess, last week, which is, uh, us getting recommendations from different community groups. At the end of the day, we still make the, the official confirmation or selection, no matter who they choose. So it'll be the same, um, that they would make their recommendations to us, and, um, if we choose not to confirm that person, we can choose not to confirm that person. Uh, and we would still go by all the, all of the requirements, um, and, and base it off of what we're looking for on the board.
Thank you for the clarica, clarification for me. I definitely read it wrong as I first read it, so I'm glad we were able to, a refinement, so thank you.
Any additional questions or comments? Hearing none, please call the vote.
All right, so this is four B?
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Allot?
Yes.
Ms. Bowers?
Yes.
Ms. Daniels?
Yes.
Ms. Green?
Yes.
Mr. Madsen? Mr. Madsen?
Yes.
Mr. Majors?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Motion carries for B.
Ms. Green?
Thank you, President Williams. Um, so the next amendment, um, I make a motion to amend Bill eight, section five point seven, um, letter F will be inserted, it will read, at-large members shall be appointed to three-year terms, and then also we would change letter D to letter G.
A second, please?
Second. I'm sorry.
Thank you, Ms. Bowers. Any other additional question or comments?
Uh, just a quick question, just in the, uh, the amendment itself, for a correction, uh, appointed to three year terms, so there should be no S attached to years on that, uh, document.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any additional questions or comments? Hearing none, please call the vote.
Oh, and the vote for amendment four C, Mr. Allot?
Yeah.
Ms. Bowers?
Yes.
Ms. Daniels?
Yes.
Ms. Green?
Yes.
Mr. Madsen?
Yes.
Mr. Majors?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
That motion carries for C.
Uh, the next proposed amendment will be amendment number five. And it would be section two dash five one five point nine, membership qualifications. After point C, well, it would change to two dash five one five point nine. And its membership qualifications, under letter C, it would read, an appointee may participate in an annual city ride-along with law enforcement officers.
You have a second for that, please?
Second.
Any additional questions or comments? Hearing none, please call the vote.
Mr. Allot?
Yes.
Ms. Bowers?
Yes.
Ms. Daniels?
Yes.
Ms. Green?
Yes.
Mr. Madsen?
Yes.
Mr. Majors?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Uh, motion carries for amendment five.
Ms. Green? Then, next proposed amendment would be, uh, five A, and it would be section two, it's a motion to amend Bill eight, section two dash five one five point nine, membership. Letter D, it would read, an appointee must attend and complete an orientation and education program within six months of their appointment or otherwise have previously completed, completed a city-sponsored citizens' police academy. The law bureau, or the city law bureau shall arrange for the creation of an orientation and education program for CLIA members.
I have a second. Come on, council members, I need a second.
Second.
Thank you. Questions and comments?
Yes, just quick.
Mr. Allot, could you just put your hand up? I, I'm trying to look at her. Okay, thank you. Go ahead, Mr. Allot.
So I, I'm fine with the tenor of this amendment, but I guess what I would want is understanding and clarification of what exactly an orientation and education program for members would entail.
So Neil might be able to speak to it, um, a little more clearly. The intent was to create, um, something like a, uh, a overview of what their responsibilities are, uh, as members of the advisory commission. Um, what some of the resources available to them are, so like what information is publicly accessible. Um, if there has already been created like a, a schedule of meetings, what the schedule of meetings are, um, and just, uh, a, a time for them to be able to ask any questions to the law bureau, um, and get clarification on things before they begin. Uh, the idea behind it was that I know when I was appointed to the planning commission, I had like lots of different questions about what's my role as a commissioner, um, for the planning commission? And what are our responsibilities? What do I do? Like, things like that. And I feel like, I feel like uh, orientation is something that we should have for all of our boards and commissions, because it's important for us to provide that, um, that base information and background information, um, even to just catch them up on what's going on. So I know when I first joined planning commission, we were in the middle of the comprehensive planning process, which I knew very little about at that time. Um, so having some of that background information beforehand would have been really, uh, valuable. So that's the intent behind this, this portion here.
Got you, thanks for that.
I have a question.
Yes.
Um, it's regarding the, um, the participation within the city-sponsored citizens' police academy. Um, I've mentioned, I, I guess, before in one of these discussions, that the, the number of people that completed the citizens' police academy in the fall class of twenty eighteen, it was really limiting. Um, so I don't know if that would really give us a full complement to even choose from. I, I just don't know if that, that would be beneficial for our needs as a.
Them having previously completed the city-sponsored citizens' police academy, um, is just like, so if they've already completed it, then they wouldn't have to do the orientation within six months. They have to complete it in order to be a member. So if they haven't completed the citizens' police academy, then they have to do the, the orientation. If they've done the citizens' police academy, they don't have to do the orientation. So it doesn't limit the amount of people, it just expands the amount of people.
So whoever does the training for the citizens' police academy would do the training for this?
So, if someone, if someone was recommended to the, the uh, advisory board, and they had completed, completed the citizens' police academy, they would not be required to complete the orientation within six months. If they had not completed the citizens' police academy, they would be required to do the orientation within six months. We would still encourage everyone to do the orientation, but if they had not done the police academy, they have to do the orientation.
Well, let me rephrase my question. Who will be doing the training?
Law bureau will make those arrangements. It will not be done by the police department.
Okay, it would be outside.
The citizens' police.
Resource, right. The one who, who does the citizens' police academy would be doing this training as well?
No.
Okay.
Uh, Councilwoman Daniels, you were asking a question.
Yeah, uh, who develops the curriculum for the, um, city-sponsored citizens' police academy?
The police bureau does.
And is that with, I'm, I'm trying to get, uh, whether, um, is that developed by, um, kind of separate council, like, i- is that partially developed with input from like VAs and things like that? Because I my thought process is that, um, the review board, they are representing the city, and I think the ethical obligations changes a little bit depending on who who is developing, you know, how the ethical obligations are presented. They're presented slightly differently, so I'm not sure. Neil, do you have better insight into, like, the curriculum they use as a statewide, um, DA's kind of material, or?
I, I do not know the, the curriculum they use. I know that it was developed long ago, and it gets tweaked each time they have an academy. Um, so I know it's a multi-week process, it's got different, a different thing each week, and they bring in different, I believe, individuals or organizations as part of the training, but I can't speak to the, to the substance of it.
And I would be fine amending the amendment to remove the portion about the city-sponsored police academy, so that it would read, an appointee must complete an orientation and education program within six months of their appointment.
Okay.
Shall arrange for the creation of orientation and education program. That way everyone will go through that program.
Right.
Yeah, yes, I think that would be good for consistency purposes. That way we know that they've all received the exact same training. Um, be, just because the last class of the police, citizens' police academy was in twenty eighteen. It looks like there was a schedule for twenty nineteen, and to answer some of, um, Councilwoman Daniels' questions, uh, it's, okay, so there was, sorry, there was a class in twenty seventeen, twenty eighteen, and a proposed class, I believe, for twenty nineteen. The twenty nineteen schedule was eleven weeks, and it does look like there is, um, uh, there was a tour of the county courthouse, um, they met with the DA and the, um, magisterial district judge. So I, I don't know how involved they are, um, but I, I would agree for consistency purposes to eliminate that portion of the section.
So Ms. Green, do you want to rephrase that?
Yes, I'll rephrase it, read, an appointee must attend and complete an orientation and education program within six months of their appointment. The city law bureau shall arrange for the creation of an orientation and education program for CLIA members.
Councilmembers, any additional questions or comments? I'm hearing none, please call the vote.
All right, we're calling this five B, correct?
Correct.
All right, Mr. Allot?
Yeah.
Ms. Bowers?
Yes.
Ms. Daniels?
Yes.
Ms. Green?
Yes.
Mr. Madsen?
Yes.
Mr. Majors?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
That motion carries for five B.
The next, uh, proposed amendment is, uh, I make a motion to amend Bill eight, section two dash five one five point one zero point three, communications, to add section K. Issue subpoenas for third-party records in the course of a CLIA review and investigation of a formal written complaint for misconduct in a manner informed, authorized under the laws of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania for administrative proceedings.
Do you have a second, please?
Second.
Okay, questions or comments?
Yeah, so just, just a quick, sorry, um, raised my hand, uh, just a quick, uh, I guess, question, and I, I may be directing this towards, uh, our solicitor. So, uh, do we know what that formal process or request pro, do we know what that formal request process? Just, just for my, uh, clarification.
Yes, we do. There, there's a thing called the Local Agency Act, um, that we operate under for other local boards, not just us, but all through the state. Um, so, you know, there's an issuance, it typically comes at a request, and it's issued by the chair of the board. Um, it then is served, uh, uh, as it's not a judicial proceeding. Uh, it, it's basically delivered one way or the other to whoever the record request is directed to. Um, it, it would, I, I would suggest that this would more likely be to, uh, a, a business or an institution or a body, because it's a records request as opposed to an individual, um, in administrative proceeding, basically to, uh, gather information related to a complaint or an investigation that they're handling.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Neil, should we not, uh, should we not say issue an administrative subpoena for third party?
No, it is an administrative subpoena. That's what it is.
Not include the administrative part, because it's like, it's like a, um, right-to-know subpoena type?
No, it's, it's administrative. It's, and by the way, I will note administrative is spelled wrong as I'm looking at it right now, but, uh, but it is, is an administrative subpoena under Pennsylvania law, uh, as other chairs do. To enforce it, it would have, you'd have to have an independent, uh, court proceeding brought, uh, if it's an enforcement question, and that would have to come through the city solicitor as a matter of law.
I understand that, but I, I'm saying, in her amendment, should we not put issue an administrative subpoena? Should we not include an administrative, the word administrative, or?
I, I think administrative is actually helpful, so there's no confusion later down the road that it's a judicial subpoena.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Green?
I would be okay with adding that, Em.
Okay. Any additional questions or comments? Hearing none, please call the vote.
Mr. Allot?
Yes.
Ms. Bowers?
Yes.
Ms. Daniels?
Yes.
Ms. Green?
Yes.
Mr. Madsen?
Yes.
Mr. Majors?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
That motion carries for amendment six.
Ms. Green?
Yes, uh, the next proposed amendment, I would like to make a motion to amend Bill eight, uh, amendment number seven, to add section two dash five one five point one three, and it would read attendance of city personnel at committee meetings. CLIA may formally request attendance of a police commissioner or chief or other management personnel at any committee meeting to review or discuss existing or proposed police policies and practices. B would read any requests shall be in writing and, and made at least seven days in advance with notice of the matters or discussion at the meeting, including to respond to any pending formal requests for records. And section C would read the mayor, police commissioner or chief may assign a designee to appear before the committee to respond to a formal request to attend a committee meeting.
Have a second, please?
Second.
Thank you. Any questions or comments?
Just a quick comment. Uh, I guess Neil will clear, you'll clear up any, uh, spelling errors. So in that section, attendance, uh, in two dash five point five one three at the beginning, uh, has a misspelling and so does policies in section A. So I just want to make sure those, I'm sure those, those get cleaned up just as
Right, they'll be corrected. There's three of them that I found in there, so.
Yeah.
Yeah, I was getting to the third, so, okay, um, but, uh, yeah, outside of that, I think that's okay and, um, yeah, no, I think that's, I think that's okay. And I think there, um, I think there's also a room for us to, uh, well, no, I guess the police can send whoever they want, but ensuring that we're, you know, utilizing our community policing officer to help out in this whole process, I think could be something that, that's helpful, but uh, as the amendment stands with those minor corrections, um, no other comments. Thank you.
Any additional com- comments? Please call the vote.
Calling the vote for amendment seven, Mr. Allen?
Yes.
Ms. Bowers?
Yes.
Ms. Daniels?
Yes.
Ms. Green?
Yes.
Mr. Madison?
Yes.
Mr. Majors?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
That, uh, motion carries amendment seven.
All right, I would like to make a motion to amend Bill eight, um, amendment number eight. It would add section two dash five one five point one zero point four. Uh, named records request of the Harrisburg Bureau of Police, request for records under this chapter to the Harrisburg Bureau of Police will be made and processed in the manner set forth in this subsection. Point A, request for information subject, excuse me, request for information subject to this chapter directed by the Harrisburg Police shall be made in writing to the mayor and Harrisburg Police. Excuse me, Harrisburg Bureau of Police. Um, point B, the information request shall be promptly reviewed by HBP. Point C, the information should be provided to CLIA within fourteen business days of the request. Point D, if the HBP wa- uh, will require additional time to provide requested information, the HBP shall provide written notice to the commission within seven business days of receipt of the request. Point E, if the information request is not provided or deemed unsatisfactory to the commission, the commission may, or the commission by a public vote of the majority of its members may make a recommendation to the city council and the mayor to restrict the release or use of budgeted funds to hire new officers. Point F, city council will evaluate the request for information and any information provided to the commission by HBP. Point G, commission recommendations made under this section related to the information may be accepted or denied by a vote of the council at their sole discretion. Point H, if the recommendation of the commission is accepted by the council, the HBP will have five business days to provide the requested information to council to avoid the automatic restriction on the release of their, or the release or use of funds to hire new officers. That is the end of that amendment and it is provided in writing in case anyone needs to read over it, cause there was a lot in there.
Have a second?
I'll go ahead and second it.
Any question or comments, council members? Mr. Allen?
Raise my hand. Um, just a kind of point of clarification. So I'm thinking about, um, I think subsection E specifically, regarding the information requested, if it's not provided or deemed, or is deemed unsatisfactory to the commission, um, they can have a majority vote and that sends back to council and the mayor and our our ability to, to react involves a budgetary impact. Is that correct? Am I reading that correctly?
Yes, that's correct. So if, um, if they would find that the information has been provided, or if they feel that the information provided doesn't fulfill the, the request or the intent of their request, um, then they can vote to send it to council, make a recommendation to council to suspend the funds for the hiring of new police officers.
Okay, thank you.
Um, I do have a question. Do you not want to put, it said you stand the commission. Do you not want to say the committee? It's not a commission, it's the committee?
Yeah, say committee.
Yeah, you have commission. It's
Yeah, I was gonna mention, just kind of language throughout, um, all the amendments. I'm assuming Neil will clean that up as well, including, are we referring to always as Harrisburg Bureau of Police? How, like, all those different things? Are we gonna make that kind of a clean sweep through the whole amendment into the final bill? Is that?
We, we can do it. We can do technical amendments, uh, before you vote on it, but this one, I would say that it's proper under, under the applicable committee rules that, uh, there'd be a motion to a, amend the motion and substitute the word for committee each place the word commission appears.
Okay.
So it's clearly the intent of council.
Okay, Ms. Green?
I would like to make a motion to the, amend the amendment to replace any replace the word commission throughout this amendment with the word committee.
You have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Question or comments on that amended part of this amendment? Okay. Should we vote on that or vote them all together? Would you like?
I believe we have to vote on that first.
Separate, okay. Mr. Petroski, please call the vote.
All right, so we, uh, we're calling this, the amendment, uh, would be from the commission. Be eight. Are we voting on, um, everything first before the changing of the commission?
I believe we're voting on the changing of commission and then we'll vote on.
Okay. All right, so what are we calling this? Eight? Eight B?
Yes, eight B.
All right, eight B is committee. AJ, all right, Mr. Allen?
Yes.
Ms. Bowers?
Yes.
Ms. Daniels?
Yes.
Ms. Green?
Yes.
Your Madison?
Yes.
Majors?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
The motion carries.
Now going back to the original amendment, is there any questions or comments? Additional questions or comments? I'm sorry. Ms. Green, I, 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 I do have a problem with, um, restricting the release of, of funding for the police department. Uh, city council already has the authority to restrict and not fund certain areas or certain line items uh, in any type of budget that comes before this council. So I do have a problem when we restrict funding in any particular area. Especially for those to be, those that we have to replace with those individuals who lead that department.
Uh, I do understand President Williams, um, this is a section of the bill that I hope would never have to be used, uh, because I do expect that our police department and our, um, advisory committee will have a good working relationship and that the information will be provided. So it's not expected that this section will need to be used. Uh, it's more of a compliance trigger to ensure that, um, if for some reason, not so much with the Harrisburg Police Department that we have now, even in future departments, as this, uh, this bill show likely outlive our tenure on, uh, city council, um, and our current commissioner's time as commissioner. Um, it's to ensure that as time goes on, we still have the ability to ensure compliance uh, from the police department, no matter who's at the helm or who's on council. But hopefully it's something that we'll never have to use.
Okay. I mean, I, I certainly agree that, you know, there should be compliance and that we should have some type of, of reform here, but I think when it comes to, you know, holding back funds in any particular department, I, I have a problem with that, so I will be voting no on that. Any additional questions or comments? Hearing nine, please call the vote.
Calling the, the vote on amendment eight, Mr. Allen?
Yes.
Ms. Bowers?
Yes.
Ms. Daniels?
Yes.
Ms. Green?
Yes.
Mr. Madison?
Yes.
Mr. Majors?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
No.
Motion carries.
Thank you, Mr. or Ms. Green?
Thank you, President Williams. The next proposed amendment, um, this was brought forth by Councilwoman Bowers. Would you like to read your amendment? Would you like me to read it for you?
Sure, I can read it to give you a break.
All right, thanks.
It's amendment number nine, section two dash five one five point seven, uh, titled Original Committee Appointment. This would be for section D. The mayor and city council shall make a request to city neighborhood groups for recommendations of qualified residents from their neighborhood for appointment to the committee. Um, and just an explanation, just as a reminder, um, I wanted to offer this amendment as a response to, um, the town halls. Uh, there seem to be, um, community members who were eager in getting involved in the process. Um, and I thought that this would be an easy way, um, for them to do so. Um, I also think it will be beneficial in improving, uh, city councils' relationships with these active neighborhood groups uh, for future, um, for a future working relationship to fill vacancies on some of our other, um, boards and committees.
I have a second, please?
Second.
Any questions or comments? Hearing none, please call the vote, Mr. Petroski.
Calling the vote for amendment nine, Mr. Allen?
Yes.
Ms. Bowers?
Yes.
Ms. Daniels?
Yes.
Ms. Green?
Yes.
Madison?
Yes.
Mr. Majors?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
The motion carries for amendment nine.
Thank you. Ms. Green?
Uh, amendment ten was, um, recommended by Councilwoman Daniels. Would you like to read your amendment? Would you like me to read it in? She's having some trouble getting unmuted.
Yeah, I, I can read it. Um, so the amendment is to, um, is to add, um, under section two dash five one five point nine, under membership qualifications, a section F, um, that says, uh, prior criminal history shall not automatically disqualify an otherwise eligible individual from serving as an appointee.
I would second that.
Okay, any questions or comments?
And just cleaning that up to just take out the, um, the extra word that's in the written form here. B, take B out.
Okay. Any other additional questions or comments? I do have a question. Does that mean, uh, Ms. Daniels, that that individual has to have, could it be just a misdemeanor or that, that also refers to a felony? They can either have a misdemeanor or a felony?
Right, it, it, we made it general, so it includes everything, um, and whoever is making the appointment obviously will consider that as they're making their
That, that information may not be accessible to us.
Um, it doesn't disqualify them, so I don't think it needs to be accessible.
That should be a concern, but that should really be a concern. If we're dealing with someone who has a grudge against the police force, you know, uh, and I want someone over here who's not biased. So.
If I'm reading the spirit of the language, it says that it shouldn't be an automatic qualification. Correct? Like, it wasn't that we could not use it as a means, but it couldn't be an automatic disqualification. Is that correct?
Right. Uh, otherwise, the, um, the amendment would change into delineating, delineating the criminal code and going through each one. So this basically makes it a little bit easier for those of the committee to, you know, if they're appointing someone at large or us as we're looking at folks, um, what, uh, you know, what isn't, isn't okay, right? And, I mean, even if someone is committed of, has committed something like, let's say a burglary, but they committed it twenty years ago, right? That's definitely different than if they committed it a month ago. Um, so, yeah. And we do want the input of folks who have, um, experienced, uh, the criminal justice system, um, because it is its own culture. Um, and we do need folks who can give us insight into what is actually happening um, on both sides, whether it's on the police officer side or the, um, person who's being accused of a crime or has been accused of a crime.
Any additional questions or comments? Hearing none, Mr. Petroski, please call the vote.
Allen?
Yes.
Ms. Bowers?
Yes.
Ms. Daniels?
Yes.
Ms. Green?
Yes.
Mr. Madison?
Yes.
Mr. Majors?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Uh, motion carries for amendment ten.
Ms. Green? The next amendment, um, goes into the whereas clauses. So if anyone would like to offer any amendments before we get to the whereas clauses, uh, please feel free to offer them now or either at the end. All right, so amendment number eleven would amend the whereas clause and add whereas the council recognizes that public accountability of the Harrisburg Bureau of Police and law enforcement throughout our nation is essential to ensure that the constitutional guarantees of freedom afforded to all people are satisfied. And whereas the council further recognizes that the people to be served must be a fundamental resource that assists the Bureau of Police and their mission to serve all people and that the Bureau of Police must be trusted, must be a trusted fundamental resource for ensuring the safety and peace of mind of the people of the city. And whereas to achieve public accountability of law enforcement, improvement in the community relationships and to further promote public safety, the council desires to establish an advisory committee of the city residents to be known as the Citizens Law Enforcement Advisory Committee.
Have a second, please?
Second.
Any questions or comments? Hearing none, please call the vote, Mr. Petroski.
Mr. Allen?
Yes.
Ms. Bowers?
Yes.
Ms. Daniels?
Yes.
Ms. Green?
Yes.
Mr. Madison?
Yes.
Mr. Majors?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Motion carries for amendment number eleven.
Okay.
All right, are there any other amendments, um, before we close this and ask it to be sent back to the next work session, which would be October twentieth, next Tuesday?
Uh, yes, if you give me one moment, I have, uh, one that I would like, at least one that I would like to consider. Um, just find the proper section. Okay. Yes, so, uh, and I'm just making sure I have the right section and, um, Asha, excuse me, Chairwoman Green or, um, Neil can correct me if I'm wrong. So I'm looking at, uh, section two dash five point, excuse me, five one five point six composition. Is that, that's the correct section, correct? It's the composition section?
Correct.
Okay. Um, and I'd like to amend section B to read that all members must have residing in the city of Harrisburg for at least one year leading up to the appointment, uh, and must maintain residency within the city for the duration of their term on the committee. So I would just be changing the three to one year. Uh, so it would, you know, from the concerns that we heard in, in the public comment and also to from the concerns that we heard in in the public comment and also to accurately, so that they are also aligned with the members of uh, the publicly elected officials, right? So all of us, if we're going to serve on uh, in these public roles, have to only be a member of the city of Harrisburg for at least one year prior to uh, take an office. Uh, you know, and based upon all the other changes that are made in here, so we're asking for community input, we're asking for um, our policing districts to have someone in each policing district represented represented as well as we're seeking public input for individuals who uh, would ask to sit on this uh, committee. I think uh, you know, if folks have, folks should be held to the same standard as we are, and those communities would pick the best person regardless. As long as they've lived here for one year and are gonna be maintained, maintain their residency, they should have an opportunity to participate. I'm not aware of any other uh, committees in the city and we may, you know, someone can correct me if I'm wrong, that have a a three-year residency requirement to serve.
No, I think this is the only one.
Uh, I would second that motion.
I think this is the only one, Mr. Majors. Is any, is there any questions or comments on the amendment?
I have a comment. I I do think for uniformity purposes, it makes sense to just make it a year.
Okay.
I, so, I agree with the motion.
Okay. Anyone else? Mr. Petroski, please call the vote.
Mr. Allen?
Yes.
Ms. Bowers?
Yes.
Ms. Daniels?
Yes.
Ms. Green?
Yes.
Mr. Madsen?
Yes.
Mr. Majors?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Motion carries for Amendment Twelve.
Ms. Green, anything additional?
No, unless anyone else has any other amendments they'd like to be considered. Now, I would ask that it be placed on the next work session uh, agenda for October twentieth.
Thank you. Moving on to uh, ordinance for final passage, Mr. Petroski, please, we go ten of two thousand twenty into record.
Uh, President Williams, I asked that, oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Let it read into record then. If you want to suspend the rules, I can.
Okay, um, Bill Ten of Twenty Twenty is an ordinance vacating and striking from the official map of the city of Harrisburg, various unnamed paper streets within the block bounded by Radner Street, Jefferson Street, Columbia Street, North Sixth Street, and Ague Street between Columbia Street and Radner Street pursuant to Chapter Three Dash One Oh Nine of the Codified Ordinances of the City of Harrisburg.
Make a motion now, Mr. Majors, to suspend the rules?
Uh, no, President Williams, I I like, I like to make a motion to 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 table uh, Bill Ten, able to be with uh, the uh, the individual who uh, expressed their uh, their complaint to us uh, to talk through whatever issue that is, uh, so long as it doesn't uh, have any, and we can vote on it at our next legislative session.
I have a motion to table. I have a second.
Second.
Please call the vote for table of Bill Ten, Mr. Petroski.
Is it, is it in order to ask a question at this time?
No, because you tabled it.
Uh, just for clarification purposes, the table uh, for the next legislative session, that would be uh, October twenty seventh.
So do you want to put this on a work session again, Mr. uh, Majors, until you look into investigate this and find out?
Madam President, I just have to weigh in as parliamentarian that once a motion to table has been seconded, it's not subject to any discussion.
Okay.
It's an upper down vote.
Oh, I know that, Mr. uh, Grover, but he had made a statement that he wanted to put it on the legislative session.
I, I understand that. I just.
Okay, thank you. All right. Well, Mr. Majors, we can discuss that uh, later.
Yeah, we can discuss that in new business.
Thank you. Um, motion to table. Mr. Petroski, please call the vote.
Mr. Allen?
Yes.
Ms. Bowers?
Yes.
Ms. Daniels?
Yes.
Ms. Green?
Yes.
Your Madsen?
Yes.
Your Majors?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Uh, motion to table carries.
Thank you.
Seven.
Moving on. The Bill Eleven of Two Thousand Twenty, please read that into record, Mr. Petroski.
Uh, Bill Eleven of Twenty Twenty is an ordinance amending the official zoning map of the city of Harrisburg for twenty-two hundred and twenty-three hundred Market Street Zone institutional INS to change the zoning designation to commercial neighborhood CN.
Any additional questions or comments on Bill Eleven? Here and now, please call the vote, Mr. Petroski.
Mr. Allen?
Yes.
Ms. Bowers?
Yes.
Ms. Daniels?
Yes.
Ms. Green?
Yes.
Your Madsen?
Yes.
Mr. Majors?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Bill Eleven passes.
Thank you. Moving on to resolutions, Resolution Seventy Seven of Two Thousand Twenty, Mr. Petroski, please do that into record.
Resolution Seventy Seven of Twenty Twenty is a resolution approving the disposition of surplus equipment and vehicles which have exhausted their useful life of the city operations by the Bureau of Vehicle Management.
And that will be placed in Public Works Committee. Moving on to Resolution Seventy Eight.
Resolution Seventy Eight of Twenty Twenty is a resolution authorizing the city of Harrisburg to negotiate and enter into a professional services agreement contract with Steve Zimmerman to provide access and service of the city's historical mainframe, programming, operations, and related services in the Bureau of Information Technology.
And that will be placed in Building and Housing Committee. Moving on to Resolution Seventy Nine.
Resolution Seventy Nine of Twenty Twenty is a resolution authorizing the submission of a grant application to the Pennsylvania Department of Transportation Multimodal Transportation Fund for up to nine hundred and seventy-two thousand, seven hundred and thirty dollars to help fund the construction of the Courthouse Connection Multimodal Project.
That will be placed in Public Works Commission, Committee, I'm sorry. Moving on to Resolution Eighty.
Resolution Eighty of Twenty Twenty is a resolution approving the fifth proposed Twenty Twenty Budget Reallocation.
Uh, Mr. Allen, uh, you would like to make a motion to?
Yes, let's make a motion to suspend the rules to discuss this resolution.
Okay, can I have a second to suspend the rules?
Second.
Thank you. Ms. Allen? I think the first part, Ms. Allen, is uh, for you to discuss, and then the second part, Mr. Majors, is for you to discuss under Public Works. We can't hear you, Mr. Allen.
Oh, sorry. There we go. So we'll break it down as appendix on Appendix A. Um, does someone want to, from the administration, speak to the specific appendix?
Which one is appendix?
Appendix.
Okay, sorry.
Yep, Appendix A covers the um.
Security fencing.
The security upgrade.
Yeah, that's security fencing, correct.
Yes, uh.
No, no, no.
Uh, Mark.
A is not that. Appendix A is the Brenner settlement.
It's the neighborhood, yes, it's.
Yes, it's Brenner is A.
Okay.
My apologies.
Fine, Neil Grover can uh, speak to uh.
Mr. Wally?
Yes, Madam President.
Are you gonna speak to the, that or Neil, Mr. Grover? I'm sure, I'm sorry.
Neil will speak to the the settlement and I will speak to the uh, upgrades of the Public Works Building.
Okay, thank you.
So, this schedule has to do with a resolution of a long uh, pending legal dispute with the prior owner uh, of the property that the city has acquired that houses the Public Works Facility. Um, the city has been uh, in both the local court and up on the appellate court uh, for quite some time on this matter. Uh, it it seemed in the best interest of the parties to come to a resolution. The city had never had a real question about uh, what, that there was money due, but the question was how much? And uh, this appears to be a good faith resolution. We uh, had assistance from the court in mediating a solution with the owner and their counsel. Uh, you know, the mayor and I and our outside counsel attended, uh, and this was the recommendation of everyone uh, for a final number, and it was actually recommended by the court as a fair resolution of the dispute. So uh, it is coming forth uh, to fund that resolution.
Any questions or comments, councilmembers? Okay, thank you, Mr. Grover. Moving on to Appendix B, I mean, yes, Appendix B. Mr. Wally?
Thank you, Madam President. Uh, good evening, councilmembers. Uh, this amendment is um, uh, an amendment to upgrade uh, certain um, uh, elements of the facility at the, at the Public Works Facility. Uh, including security fencing, uh, lighting, uh, and cameras. Uh, this is in response to uh, um, some recent incidents in and around uh, the Public Works uh, facility and also uh, just our ongoing efforts to really make uh, the building secure, especially for those employees who come uh, early in the morning and leave late at night. Uh, so uh, we're looking to transfer money from um, the number of uh, line items in order to transfer into um, parks maintenance um, and uh, Public Works in order for the building improvements. So uh, we anticipate that uh, these improvements will be in the neighborhood of three hundred and ten thousand dollars, and in order to do that, uh, with um, with speed, uh, we wanted to do it this year, and in order to do that, uh, we needed to make the, this request for a budget reallocation.
Councilmembers, any questions or comments?
Yes, um, President Williams. So on on the park maintenance side, which are we, which facility are we looking at shoring out? Cause uh, looks like we have, there's two line items. One is for the vehicle management and one is for parks maintenance. Are we talking about the same facility or two separate facilities for um, the security fencing? Cause that's the, that's the note we have.
It's the same campus, but they're divided by use. Uh, and so one is used by Public Works and one is used by Parks Maintenance, and so we're splitting uh, and sharing the cost between the two departments.
Okay, um, okay, so, but there's just, so again, it looks like the significant balance of the work is being done on the parks maintenance side. Is that correct?
Well, it's, it is, but it's, it's, it's really to secure the whole campus. Um, a lot of it is electrical work that needs to be done and excav- excavation work, excuse me. Uh, so that's the bulk of the, the, the cost.
Okay, and and we're talking about the facility at uh, on uh, at Eighteenth and Paxton, correct?
Correct.
Okay, and would any of the work be impacted by any future uh, development or plans for that area? As we know, we have, you know, several things uh, pending with uh, Penn Dot and and other entities.
Quite possibly, uh, but as part of um, uh, the eminent domain uh, law in Pennsylvania, they will, uh, Penn Dot will pay to move equipment that we have installed. Uh, so we anticipate that if there's any um, encroachment by the state, we will then be able to move that equipment at their expense.
Okay.
You will correct me if I'm wrong.
That would be the expectation, so.
Yeah, okay, thank you. And I I think this is something that uh, is uh, is definitely uh, due, you know, especially in light of recent events that happened in that area to provide additional security to our, our, our public works and uh, parks maintenance staff uh, is paramount. So uh, thank you for uh, moving uh, rather quickly on this uh, and other councilmembers. Uh, yeah, I think this is at least one piece that I'd, you know, would recommend us as just pending rules have the discussion, but if we could uh, consider this quickly so that the working gets started, I'd greatly appreciate it.
Okay, any additional comments or questions? Here and now. Mr. Allen?
None for me.
Okay, there's no additional questions or comments. Have a motion to go back into business?
Still moved.
Have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Now we will consider Resolution Eighty of Two Thousand Twenty. Mr. Petroski, please call the vote.
Mr. Allen?
Yes.
Ms. Bowers?
Yes.
Ms. Daniels?
Yes.
Ms. Green?
Yes.
Mr. Madsen?
Yes.
Your Majors?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Resolution Eighty passes.
Thank you. Moving on to Resolution Eighty One.
Resolution Eighty One of Twenty Twenty is a resolution authorizing the city of Harrisburg to negotiate and enter into a final agreement with the Pennsylvania Department of Transportation arising from the Harrisburg Strong Plan to secure a reimbursement of funds up to two million, eight hundred and ninety-two thousand, four hundred and seven dollars through the statewide multimodal transportation program and to thereby assist with the ongoing North Second Street Multimodal Project.
Okay, that will be placed in Public Works Committee. Moving on to Resolution Eighty Two.
Resolution Eighty Two of Twenty Twenty is a resolution authorizing a final agreement to resolve certain uh, disputes arising from a two thousand fourteen lease agreement of certain properties serving as the city's primary public works facility.
That also will be placed in the Public Works Committee. Moving on to Resolution Eighty Three.
Resolution Eighty Three of Twenty Twenty is a resolution ratifying an agreement between the city of Harrisburg and Servco Insurance Services Incorporated for the provision of third-party administrator services relating to general liability and related claims.
That will be placed in Budget and Finance Committee. Moving on to Resolution Eighty Four.
Resolution Eighty Four of Twenty Twenty is a resolution confirming the appointment of uh, Ms. Emily A. Farron Esquire to serve as the Assistant City Solicitor for the City of Harrisburg's Collection Matters.
That will be placed in Administration Committee. Moving on to Resolution Eighty Five.
Resolution Eighty Five of Twenty Twenty is a resolution of the Council of the City of Harrisburg to adopt a comprehensive plan in accordance with the Pennsylvania Municipalities Planning Code.
That will be placed in Community Economic Development Committee. Moving on to Old Business Councilmembers, any old business?
Yes, uh, just want to speak to, uh, I guess, ask the question of the solicitor. So uh, we had tabled Bill uh, Ten uh, for final passage. Uh, looking to uh, ensure that I'm following proper parliamentary procedure. Uh, I I intend to bring it back up uh, at our next uh, legislative session uh, in between time. Give us opportunity to talk with the parties involved. Uh, I just need to break it from the floor then, or can we add it to the next legislative legislative session agenda? My apologies.
It's, that's a good technical question, um, and my answer is, I don't know. I will read that and find out for you. Um, I I think historically, we we would have just stuck it on the agenda. Um, uh, because you could bring it up at another time in this meeting or another meeting uh, once it is tabled, but the table only goes for the, for the length of this meeting, I believe is what the rule says, but I have to reread that to make sure. When it's tabled, I believe it expires when the meeting expires, when it adjurs.
So then, under new business, it would then be possible for me to bring it from the table and place it somewhere else. If, that was my desire.
Back to committee, back to wherever you wish.
All right.
I believe, but I will confirm that the tabling expires when this meeting adjurs tonight.
Okay, so I have, I will have a motion under new business then. Thank you.
Any other old business? Moving on to new business. I'm sorry, Mr. Majors?
No, I'll wait for new business.
Okay. New business, Mr. Majors?
Uh, yes, uh, under new business, I would like to uh, bring up Bill Ten from uh, the, from the table. Uh, yeah, make a, a, a motion to bring up Bill Ten from the table.
A second?
A second.
Okay.
Okay, so now that we have.
Wait, 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 we're bringing it from the table. We need to vote on that. You're bringing it up from the table, we need to vote to bring it off the table. Mr. Petroski, please call the vote.
Mr. Allen?
Yes.
Ms. Bowers?
Yes.
Ms. Daniels?
Yes.
Ms. Green?
Yes.
Mr. Madsen?
Yes.
Mr. Majors?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, Mr. Majors?
Okay, thank you. So uh, I would like to move Bill Ten to uh, our next legislative set, to a vote at our next legislative session on uh, October twenty seventh. Uh, in between then, uh, myself, uh, I will reach out to uh, the parties involved to try to address the concerns that were brought up by uh, the resident on the six hundred block of Radner Street. We had attempted uh, to reach out in public. We do have some email correspondence, so I will correspond with them to uh, try to connect in person so we can work to address their issue uh, prior to our next legislative session.
Okay, I'll put it on the next legislative session agenda. Okay, I'll put it on the next legislative session agenda. Uh but in the interim, also, Mr. uh Majors could do contact PPL and make sure that they don't have any right away issues for that particular area, because that was never considered. There is big power uh pose in the back of that area that we need to make, we need to be reassured that they can reach those particular posts.
Yes, I will uh, I will do that.
Okay. Any other new business, council members?
Uh Madam, Madam Chair?
Yes.
Just on this particular issue, just because this was a public hearing, not just a public meeting on Bill ten, if in fact the council is going to consider additional information and evidence in its decision, we would have to reconvene the public hearing and bring the court reporter back, only if there's going to be new facts and information that go into the consideration.
I spoke with um several people today, and they did not consider the fact that there's two large PPL uh power pose in that vicinity, and in order to be able to reach those posts, the fence and area enables them to be able to conduct their business. So that was my question. When I went there today to look at the area, I was concerned about that particular um area, because also they have indicated that they would have flexibility of using their parking lot. And then when I went there today, it also, it it enables those individuals who parked on that lot to come out of that lot, because others are parked on the the main street, on the off-street parking.
Well, the inquiry today and of, I think, a formal determination between here and the 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 next legislative session, uh if there is going to be new information that's put into council for consideration, uh we just would have to advertise and reconvene the public hearing portion.
That's fine, we can do that, because those answers, those questions need to be answered. Today I heard uh from the residents there, and I want them to be assured that their voices are heard and that we will address their concerns.
So I I would recommend at this point that you could always just so it can keep moving and and have the issues addressed, advertise for a public hearing reconvening on the at head of the next legislative session and do it that way. Uh and um if you don't need it, because you what you find out in between isn't really going to change the record, then there's nothing to add, but I would advertise it, you could always cancel that portion.
Okay, you can do that for next Tuesday, uh have it before the work session if we find that there's additional information that we encounter, Mr. Majors.
Yes, 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 we can do that. So we'd ask to advertise for a public hearing at our, ahead of our next legislative work session uh scheduled for uh October twentieth, uh and we will hold a public hearing on Bill ten if new information or new facts are brought to light from the conversations uh with the 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 resident and uh reaching out to PPL.
Okay. Is there any additional new business, council members? Uh Mr. Allen?
Yeah, just a question. Um I thought about this, I stopped by the county building on Friday, um kind of as a follow-up. Are we do we know when we're going to get an update or any additional information about polling stations on November third? Are it's everyone opening as planned? Is there any changes or anything that we know about at this point? That has been communicated with us in the city.
Okay, um I can check into that for you next week, Mr. Allen. Uh I've been in conversation with Mr. Feizer, and I'm not aware of any different polling stations that have been changed at this point.
Okay, great, thank you, that's all I have.
Any other new business?
No, I I just, I just, so, sorry, yeah, I just also like to thank um all the public comments that we've been receiving on. Uh I'd like to first publicly thank uh Chair Green for working with everyone in in on council and in in the community as we're working to make amendments to Bill eight. Uh this has been, you know, Yoma's work on her part to work on trying to get the community engaged. I know that this is the first piece, and we're going to have another work session on that next week to discuss the amendment, so um you know, I appreciate the work that, you know, you have you have done to us thus far and the work that we're going to continue to do, so I'd again encourage the public to uh take a look when all these amendments get uh uploaded and just for the record uh to our solicitor, um now that the bill's amended, uh how quickly will the amendments be available, made available on the uh public website?
Mr. Grover, you're muted.
Muted.
You're muted.
Okay, I apologize. I can't speak to precisely when, but it would be this week sometime. Um it the these are pretty simple to make, the ones that are that we have tonight. So I would do that, I would provide it to the city clerk, who I think then arranges um for its publication with the IT folks.
Okay, and then I just uh would would ask uh our our chief clerk, uh Mr. Petroski, when those are done, if you could provide council with a link to the amended version, so we can work on sharing it out to um the people that we have been discussions with and with the public, so they know where to go to find the amended version of the bill. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Majors. Any additional new business? Uh Mr. Madsen, you may want to, Mr. Madsen, you're muted. You may want to uh announce your presentation of the comp plan?
Yes, uh we will be discussing the comprehensive plan at our work session next week. Uh the administration will give us an overview of the plan, followed by uh Q and A from council. This has been a document we've been waiting for years now, uh so we're all eager to take a look at it in its final stages. Um if my colleagues could provide me some feedback uh in terms of how they like to proceed moving forward, I doubt that we will accomplish a complete review uh next week, and we'd also want to solicit feedback from the community. I know the co- uh the planning commission has already gotten that said feedback, but we may just want to make sure our double check that all folks have another opportunity to com- uh com- uh comment on the plan. Uh and so uh we'll have President Williams, I will sidebar with you and Vice President Allot as well to think of a strategy, and if everybody could provide their feedback as well, that would be helpful.
Thank you.
Councilman Madsen?
Yes.
There is actually timetables and obligations under the municipal planning code for when council can consider the details of the comp plan publicly and how it does it. There has to be a public hearing. It can't be sooner than forty-five days after the plan is delivered by the city to, and it lists the agencies that it has to go to, the Dolphin County Planning Commission, the school district, the contiguous municipalities. So there is a process which we will send down the steps for you. Tiffany Baldock has worked on this vigorously, uh as has Jeffrey Knight, and they will provide the timeline um for what the statute requires. So um that has to be a public process, and it actually restricts that you can't do it earlier uh until these other agencies have the chance to review it.
Okay, well, it sounds like a conversation with uh Ms. Baldock warranted uh in the law department, so we can hash out.
I think the intention next week is for for the planning bureau to simply present an overview that this is the document uh and go through that process publicly, what it's going to be.
Just out of curiosity, forty-five days would take us to when in the calendar?
I don't know, it's from when they receive it. I don't know if they've received it yet. I I I, we will check with Jeffrey, he will know that.
Just be helpful to know that, because we have a budget here.
Right.
Plan all that accordingly. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other new business?
Yes.
I'm sorry.
Just lastly, for uh for me, uh two quick points. Uh this Saturday, October seventeenth, the Brothers of Phi Beta Sigma, Theta Omicron Sigma Chapter will be working, uh will be doing a free grocery giveaway at Wesley AME Zion Church located at twenty-two nineteen North Fifth Street. That will be starting at eleven AM until supplies last. Uh this is about the third one at Wesley, uh and we know that there are several other organizations that are doing grocery giveaways for folks, you know, we're in difficult times right now, so everyone is trying to do their best to be able to help out uh individuals in our community. Uh and another, and just a reminder to anyone here who's engaged, and yeah, I'm sure most people that are taking the time out to watch us are registered to vote, but the last day to register to vote is October nineteenth, and you can register at votepa.com or at the Dolphin County uh courthouse, and the last day to request a absentee or mail-in ballot is October twenty-seventh. Uh just want to encourage people to participate in the process of uh voting in the general election, and I that is all I have, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Major. That was going to be my statement as well, to remind everyone, please register to vote. Anything else, council members, any other new business?
Yes, I don't know if this goes to President Williams or the solicitor, but back in the spring, we talked about the Affordable Housing Bill that was supposed to come down, and then COVID hit. Uh when is that bill coming down?
There is a target date for November the tenth, I believe.
Okay. Will we get a copy of that before you send it down to us, a free to preview that, that plan, or that bill?
So our senior deputy Tiffany Baldock is the one uh handling that, and she will be in touch uh on the issues as you move forward. I'm I'm sure she's happy to meet with you as as it progresses. Uh she's working also with Nona uh and others, Jeff Knight, uh on pieces of this, so.
Okay. Uh Ms. Bowers, I know you also were working with the Affordable Housing with uh Mr. Worry too as well?
Yes, um I've been involved in some of the conversations.
Okay, okay, and I know that you had some input with that, so.
Yes.
All right. Anything else, council members, any other new business?
Uh President Williams, just as a aside to that conversation, um it may be good to just think of the comprehensive plan and how it fits with that legislation as we have these conversations.
Okay, you're right. Okay, thank you, Mr. Madsen.
And Madam Chair, just a clarification, apparently we said tonight, two different days for the comp plan uh that presentation. We said, apparently said on the record, both the next work session and the next legislative session, which.
Yes. So what is the forty-five day period? When does that end, you know?
So I I I believe the plan is delivered, but I don't know that. It's from when the county receives it, and I have to with Jeffrey, but the but the presentation by planning, is that next week or the week after? Is that the work session or the legislative session?
Okay, Mr. Madsen, do you want the presentation on the work session, or do you want it at the legislative session?
Like it as soon as possible, so.
Work section.
Session next week, if that's what we should.
October twenty, the comprehensive plan will be at presented to Harrisburg City Council and the public.
Right, but just just an overview, so.
Right. Okay. Any other additional new business? Okay, here, and I may have a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Have a second?
Again.
Good evening, thank you, everyone.
Good night, everyone.
Thank you.
Night.
Good night, everyone.